Command calls me in order. First signs roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call.
Here.
Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next sign being. Command calls me in order.
Here.
First signs roll call. Next up is your crew's agenda.
No changes, Mayor.
Ain't no proclamations. We want the next items up to your citizens' participation.
No changes.
We ask assistance come forward. Ain't no proclamations. We want the next items up to your citizens' address for the record.
No changes.
We ask assistance come forward.
Scott Shafer. Mayor and Board on here tonight to address one of my aldermen who was one. I'm really disappointed that one of my aldermen tonight can vote against the safety of the city employees. And that was exactly what I wanted. Meeting is staffed. There was a vote taken that involved building access. That was keeping a door buzzer. Taken that involved building access. Originally started because of COVID, but with everything that has been going on. Know there are issues across this country. Because it's even more important. Know our people who sometimes get upset with the government. We need to make sure we give ours every measure of safety. Get upset, especially with the police park. We give ours is built. I am glad that the rest of the board will keep this buzzer on the door. But again, I'm disappointed that one of my aldermen votes no on it. Exposed to retire gives response. If you know safety first. I hope in the future that Alderman Arnold will keep staff safety mine over small. He makes a vote. One employee safety and voting board is too dirty. He makes a vote. One employee safety and voting board is too dirty. He makes a vote. One employee safety and voting board is too dirty. He makes a vote. Just one employee safety and voting board is too dirty. He makes a vote. Just one employee safety and voting board is too dirty.
Can I share? I just got a. Just one employee safety and voting board is too dirty. Can I share? The city put in an ordinance to change the parking rights in the rear of my house. Put in an ordinance to change the parking rights in the rear of my house. I pay my house payment. I keep my yard up. Keep up the dirt as bad. I have everything for the city. I could gravel down to Parkham, but now we're talking about a concrete space, which is gonna be a. I have everything for the city. I could gravel down to Parkham, but now we're talking about a concrete space. Pay for storage. Park that stuff when I own that property and I have space. Pay for storage. Park that stuff when I own that property and I have space. I think somewhere around. Park that stuff when I own that property. People when neighbors want to get a homeowners association. Park that stuff. This time. People so we have that. My associates. Homeowners Association. People so we have that. Especially my associates. You said homeowners Association. People so we have that.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else wish to address the board?
Hello, I'm Jan Grill. I live at one zero three five.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Hello, I'm Jan Grill. I live at one zero from five. Um, I'd like to talk about the July fireworks. I was in my house with my two dogs. I'd like to talk about the July fireworks. All of them don't like. I was in my house with my two dogs. They came to me kind of upset around eleven o'clock. I told them, uh, just be patient. Minutes around eleven o'clock. And they were, and I was, uh, and. Miracle of miracles within ten minutes of eleven o'clock. And I was, all the fireworks stopped. And my neighbor. Uh, I don't know who's responsible for this. My neighbor, Board of Aldermen. Or, uh, I don't know who's responsible for an unusually law-abiding citizenry in Gray Valley. But usually have a law-abiding citizenry to say that in Gray Valley. But usually, uh, our country's earth. And my dogs didn't have any respect. Uh, our country's.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I moved that we approved the consent agenda.
Okay, motion.
So moved.
Second Oliver Knox. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
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 I'll post same sign. Right, seeing no previous business, new business or presentations, move on to public hearings. Uh, first public hearing is for the Lofts at Creekside Landing zoning change.
So, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, the applicant is Blue Springs Safety Storage South Two LLC. They're requesting a change of zoning on approximately seven point five three acres from District R three P U D. Plan unit development to R three P multi-family residential district plan overlay district. This is also the approval of a preliminary development plan plat to be known as the Lofts at Creekside Landing. The development site is generally located east of Northwest Nybar Parkway. Where Northwest Nybar Boulevard dead ends to the east. Referring to the city's comprehensive plan, this illustrates this area as multifamily on the preferred land use map. The preliminary development plan for the Lofts at Creekside Landing shows four buildings that will contain twenty-four units in each building. Three, four plexes and one duplex for a total of one hundred and ten units. The total land area is seven point five three acres. This will yield fourteen point six units per acre. The city's zoning regulations allow up to nineteen point six units per acre in the District R three multifamily. The development proposes a community building, swimming pool, playground and pickleball courts. Also a courtyard in the center of the four three-story buildings. There are proposed sidewalks within the development for residents to access these entities. There's approximately fifty-one percent of the site that will be pervious or green space. The city regulations require two hundred and twenty parking spaces be provided for the number of units proposed. With the garages proposed development plan illustrates two hundred and fifty-five spaces. In District P, the development shall be screened from abutting or adjoining properties zoned for residential use. By a wall or fence at least six feet in height. The area adjacent to such wall or fence shall be planted with trees and shrubs. To form an ornamental screen and trees and shrubs shall be maintained by the developer. The applicant has submitted the building elevations that are part of your packet. It shows the general style of the size and exterior of the construction materials of the buildings proposed. Proposed height of the three-story buildings is approximately forty feet. In District R three, the maximum height allowed is forty-five feet. The exterior buildings are stucco, stone and siding. These materials are acceptable exterior buildings per city regulations. During the planning and zoning public hearing on June eighth. On Francis Royer addressed the commission. Mr. Royer is the property owner to the east. Mr. Royer is also the property, uh, who, the owner of the property who sold it to the developer. Mr. Royer requested that the fencing that was going to be installed on the north property line. Be extended and serve as a barrier between his property to the east and development. Um, he requested that that same privacy fence be extended along the east property line. The commission by a vote of three to one recommends approval to the Board of Aldermen with staff recommendations. Staff recommendations were to provide the screening along the west property line as well as the north property line. And then extend that screening along the property adjacent to Mr. Royer. The applicant has revised both the preliminary development plan as well as the preliminary plat. Those plans as well as the landscaping plan has been provided to the Board of Aldermen and are a part of your packet. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the change in zoning, preliminary development plan and preliminary plat.
Any questions or comments on the board? Seeing none, as this is a public hearing, I'll open it up, uh, open it up for comments for or against. If you would like to speak for or against the project and come forward to the microphone. And please address the board. Anyone wish to address this project in the public hearing?
I have some concerns. I don't know whether to bring them up now or wait till we get to the order.
Either way, you do now.
This design is kind of a high-density, close-together building type setup that you normally see in an intercity situation. Where you have a lack of land to build on, which that's not the case we have here. Uh, it adds a significant impact on our city's infrastructure, sewer water, uh, streets. We're gonna be dropping in excess of two hundred vehicles out of that area with no controlled intersection there. Where it's already a very busy intersection with Snibar and Snibar Boulevard. So some impact there needs to be considered. I went to rent.com and from that, we're in excess of somewhere around six hundred apartments in our community now. This is gonna add another hundred and ninety-two. And there's, uh, two hundred and twelve present parking spaces scheduled around this particular development. That only leaves twenty spots open for visitors. And that's calculating two cars per residence. Uh, many times multiple people live in these apartments to be able to afford to rent. So you're gonna see more than two cars per apartment. And it's gonna be a significant congestion issue around there, which could lead to several concerns with emergency services. Uh, around that particular building. The other thing that concerned me, I, I don't imagine this has gone to the fire department for approval or look, a review. But these structures are, are having a narrowest area between buildings of twenty-four feet and inches. And that is awfully close for this size structure. If there's a fire, I, I didn't see anything about whether there were sprinklers there or not, but. Uh, if one of these gets going, there's a good chance you could actually lose all four of them. Uh, you only have one way in, one way out to bring in water. And for the fire apparatus to get in there and deal with that particular structure. And depending on how far along that would get, it could be a significant problem. You're gonna have people wanting to get out of there with their cars, leave if there's a fire and so forth. I, I see a, a, a huge concern there trying to put so much in such a small space. Mr. Royer reviewed this when I was on the board before with something different, but yet it came up with the same issue. They're trying to put too much structure, not enough parking. Uh, the parking that they had was gonna block sidewalks that they would put in. I mean, it was, you know, it was just not a, a good fit. So I, I really think that this needs to be reconsidered. Uh, I appreciate the people on the board that, that reviewed this from the planning and zoning. But there are only four of them there out of the seven. And one of those voted against it. I'd like to see where more of those people were present. So we get a better feel from that board. Cause three wouldn't even be a majority of that board to approve this, in which if we were doing the same thing. It would, it wouldn't, uh, go through on our vote. Uh, so, yeah, there, these are some of my concerns I have with this, um, being, you know. Maybe a not a good fit for our community.
Mark, I'm, I'm assuming that those, I mean, everything passes.
Applicant, the applicant is present.
Okay.
I'll let him address Mr. Arnold's concerns.
Okay. Do you'd like to address this for us?
Good evening. My name is Brian Arnold, one thousand Northwest High Point, Leesum, Missouri. Thank you for your consideration of the project this evening. Um, you know, I was kinda listening as you, as you went through the, the different things there. And there are definitely some things that have come up. So, you know, as far as the, the parking, uh, we have proposed additional parking over and above the ordinances. Um, we do have some, you know, some overflow parking available, uh, there at the community center and, and some things like that. Uh, but the primary thing we can, we can do is, you know, provide more spaces. So the we set up x number of spaces we've, we've provided in excess of those. Um, as we've gone through the project, yes, the density has gone, uh, unfortunately, right now. Uh, due to, you know, all the factors that are, that are out there in the market. Um, to have a viable project, the densities are going on. There's, there's no doubt about that. Uh, to address some of those issues, um, we did try to do a mix of products there. Uh, we do have the courtyards between the buildings. And, um, you know, we have addressed some of the fire issues. So although those courtyards are there, they are designed in, uh, that fire trucks can, um, access. And, uh, you know, they have a, have a base to allow fire trucks to come off the hard surface. Uh, as you come into the, the neighborhood, we have a stream crossing, um, that has been widened over the width of the, the standard road. To, again, you know, if you have one car on the, the access or something like that. You know, it's been widened to allow additional access. You're right, it is, you know, a one-in, uh, site. So in going through the project, you know, we decided that, uh, you know, it would make sense to keep that private. So we're not asking the city to maintain those, those streets. And, um, the, uh, the sidewalks in there. Uh, we have sidewalks, we have trails. We do have a real nice amenity package there. You know, uh, with the clubhouse there on the west side, you know, not only have we put in, you know, the typical clubhouse pool. But we're, we're putting in more outdoor activities. The site is dense, but we're, we're at like fifty percent of green space. So we are below the city's density requirements for this type of project. the city's density requirements for this type of project. So these are definitely things that we've gone through and we've considered as we put this project together. So, you know, we think that we've come up with the best fit that would both work, you know, for the project, make the project viable, and to address those concerns, because, you know, they came up in planning, you know, as we went.
Your courtyard that you talk about for the fire trucks to be placed, are you talking in that twenty-four-foot spot between the buildings?
So if emergency vehicles do need to go behind the buildings, the, the way that that's done, the ground has stabilization in it, so a fire truck would not sink. And just like you said, you know, this would be, you know, we would meet all regulations, you know, through, through the fire department, you know, for the project to move forward. It would be sprinkled on the twenty-four-unit buildings. The fourplexes would not. I, you know, on the, and then you have one duplex. I know it came up in, in planning that this one duplex is kind of a strange thing there, but it's up with the other duplexes. It's on the other side of the stream. It's one small section, you know, there's really not a whole lot that, that we can do, so we do have that one duplex there.
I, I kind of echo Alderman Arnold's view. It's one way in, and if the first unit in drops a line, you can have all the pads out there that you want, but none of the other trucks are coming in. One way in, one way out limits the aerial, to be able to set up. The building's that close, without being able to get in more than one truck, if it should happen in the night, there could be a large fatality rate that thing starts running. And I think this needs to go back and be looked at a little closer.
As, as I, as I stated, you know, we would make sure that we did meet all regulations, including any recommendations that CJC would have.
Mark, let me ask you this. He's, I don't know if he has an answer or not, but, but if the road turns over to private, what recourse do we have to make sure that is up, the upkeep is done on that road? Because I mean, no, this is you guys, but what ends up happening in these projects is more than likely is it'll be built by the developer and then probably sold to somebody else, and that's when we have problems sometimes, is we get, you know, these people that live in California that own these, these buildings, and then what, I mean, I guess I just don't want the street falling apart and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, what recourse do we have?
Well, the parking lot, you know, would be maintained by the developer, would have to be maintained by the developer. You know, the code requires parking lots maintained, so the developer.
So is it same with the street then?
Well, there's no street. The street would dead-end where the public street end. In the previous Royer project, there was a looped street, and that would have been a public street that would have been maintained by the city. That, that would have been a liability for the city to maintain that looped street, because the city would have had to maintain that looped street with very little assets, have those, those multifamilies. So what we proposed to this developer was that the city responsibility in at the current public street and that anything beyond that would be private maintenance as far as street. So everything beyond that would be responsibility of the developer to maintain as far as the interior parking lot, but all the improvements in regards to, you know, the infrastructure, water, sewer, would be a responsibility of the city, and there would be appropriate easements in place for the city to maintain it. The buildings, as far as these three-story buildings, they're all going to be to code and will be sprinkled. All of our building plans are reviewed by Central Jackson County and inspected by Central Jackson County Fire Department in regards to the, the sprinkled system. So they'll be according to code.
So would that intersection there then become, I'm assuming, a four-way stop? Because right now, we have stops on what, two of the three?
Right now, there's just one single stop sign, so there'll be another stop sign probably with the development coming out. You know, so there'll be a stop sign probably coming on the, from the development out onto the parkway, unless there would be any kind of additional warrants that would take place. That would be reviewed by the city.
I can tell you, I've already gotten a couple of requests to add more stop signs there as it is now, so.
Yeah, I, I can see that just compounding an issue that's already close to being an issue there now. The other thing here that, that private parking lot, when there's a parking issue, when people park in there that don't have spots and they block other people in, who are they going to call? They're going to call our police department. Now, the police is going in there on private property, trying to deal with an issue that should be dealt with in-house, and people aren't going to understand why we can't do anything with it. Am I wrong or am I right?
That's correct.
Like, I could see a significant conflict there, where people are not going to be happy because we're not able to deal with that on private property on parking issues. And another issue, I spoke with, with Captain Polacek earlier today about parking issues and how we handle those, so, you know, I could see this one being a significant problem all the way around this structure here as well. And if we're talking about where that circle area is in between the buildings to pull in there, there's twenty-seven feet between the ends of those buildings, and that's, that's too close for us, for our, our collapse zones and our exposure problems. They'd put a ladder truck in there, so that'd be a waste of money to put where a fire truck could go in there, because I really don't think they would commit one in, or I wouldn't as a command officer on that scene, and I have forty years' experience dealing with that. So that raises a real concern. Any one of these ever gets going, you're going to lose all of them. So close together, and there's just not a need to have that type of risk exposure, in my opinion.
So on the parking side of it, I guess, how would that be any different than any other shopping center or apartment? Like, they're all private. Yeah, but, I mean, they're all private, so I don't, I don't know how this would be.
Because they're going to call us when they got a problem with somebody blocking their car in.
Yeah, but my question, I guess, is like, how does that, how is that any different than any other issue that could come up, whether it was at Old Town Marketplace or the Lofts at Old Town, like any of?
I think there's a little difference with the, with the commercial occupancy, where you're in shopping with parking, as opposed to a living area, multifamily area, when you're dealing with parking. I think there's, there would be a difference. I don't know if I'm reading that wrong or not.
Well, I don't, I mean, it's all private. I don't know if that, and you made a comment earlier about the Royer side of it, so this thing was never not approved before. It was actually the owner, developer, which was Royer himself, that decided not to go forward with it because it was in the middle of the downturn.
Yeah, he pulled it back because that, and I think he didn't feel like that what he was trying to do was going to get approved.
I mean, it's on its path, yeah.
You know, in, in looking at the project, you know, obviously, we purchased from stuff like that, you know, it was expressed to me that the, you know, to, to make it viable, the density had to go up, you know, so that's, that's what we did, and, you know, I think the, the parking situation, you're, you're absolutely correct, but that's going to be the same at, at Bristol. It's going to be the same at any project. So the only thing as a developer we can do is look at, you know, what the city is asking for, X number of spaces, you know, the codes were, were put in place to allow for those things, meet that, and in this case, exceed it. So, you know, we are, we're exceeding the parking that's required. You know, as far as it being private, that, that really doesn't change anything, like you said, you know, the, the same as any other apartment complex, shopping center. You know, if, if a vehicle is parked there that is, you know, for whatever reason, a problem, it's up to the property owner to contract with a tow company and address that issue. It's not a police issue, with the exception of the reports that are required to be, to be filed with the police department if a vehicle's towed from private property. So there, like I said, again, all I can do is exceed, you know, what's required. As far as, you know, the, you know, again, the density, I, I agree, it is a dense site, but that, that was necessary to, you know, be able to move the project home. And I have no problems, you know, again, meeting all codes. Everything that CJC would give us, we would.
Has, has Marcus, CJC looked over the whole plans yet?
No, they have not reviewed this plan. Their typical review comes during the building construction portion.
Yeah. So some of the concerns they're bringing up, they haven't looked at to say yay, nay, approve or disapprove?
Correct.
Now, some of those things are, you know, with, you know, through the engineering end of it. I apologize, our engineer's not able to be here this evening, but, you know, that's part of his, you know, portion of the project where he goes through and, you know, makes sure that, you know, what we're meeting and not meeting, and, you know, again, that, that might be a situation where CJC has a different recommendation. I've worked with them on multiple projects, and, you know, people all over there, when he's come up with suggestions, we've worked together, and we've, we've found solutions that, you know, he, he was able to work with the project and make sure that he had what he needed.
Mark, you may be able to answer this, maybe not. The comp plan, what's it show this area as? I mean, is there a designation on the comp plan between like duplexes and apartments or?
Shows it as multifamily.
But it doesn't show like a designation between like duplexes or apartments or?
It, it shows it as multifamily. So, so the, the, the comp plan shows single family, duplex, multifamily.
Okay, so it's.
Designated area shows us multifamily in the comprehensive plan.
And this is just changing the zoning from the multifamily to multifamily apartment?
Correct. So the reason why there's change in zoning was what was previously was approved was the PUD for the Royer property, and so this would change it to the planned development or the proposed plan. So the R three, the underlying zoning stays the same, the multifamily.
And I would say, when, when you go to the, the PUD side of it, the planned unit development, generally, part of the reason, you know, on the city side of it that you do that is the developer a lot of times will want something more dense, and then the city's looking for the green space and amenity side of it, and so this is kind of an interesting one because it is fairly dense, but if you look at the site plan, there's actually quite a bit of green space around there. But that's, that's the point of going through that process, is kind of finding that, that balance there. I mean, reality is, anybody, like, you know, by right could go in there and build apartments, multifamily. This is just going through and giving a little more control, I guess, on the, this is exactly, this is how it's going to be.
And I would also add that, as you recall, on the planned development standpoint, there will be a final development plan, final plat that comes back before both the plan commission as well as the Board of Alderman for final approval as well, before any building permits are issued on this project.
You know, I'd like to point out, you're absolutely correct. As we go through this process, usually, we do have a lot of requests. You know, maybe we need a different setback, maybe we, we need to increase the density, or, you know, in this case, there's some fencing and buffering requirements and stuff like that. On this, we really haven't asked to go outside, you know, significantly in, in this project. It's not something where we're coming and saying, you know, we need the city to change this, change this. You know, we've actually attempted to meet everywhere we could, even exceeded in some, in some areas. The, the fence on the, you know, east side there on the Royer property, it is not required. You know, Mr. Royer came in, he discussed it, you know, I discussed it with, you know, our team. Nobody had a problem with it. Went ahead and, and said that fence would be fine. The amenities, we've, we've gone over and above, you know, what's, what's required. The parking, we've gone over and above what's required. We've not asked for the city to change, you know, from their standards. In most cases, we've met the wants of the city.
Does that have any questions or comments? Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address the issue? All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Next public hearing is in over Chapter four hundred zoning regulations amendments, and I will just add that this was the ordinance that was removed from the agenda, and the reason why I instructed staff, one of the reasons why I instructed staff to remove that from the agenda was once we got word that Alderman Bass and Coleman Skinner were not going to be present tonight, I decided that that needed to be removed, because that's something that definitely the full board, I felt, needed to discuss. So if so be it, we can bring that back in future, but since the public hearing had been noticed, and I wanted to give everyone a chance to express their opinions on that, so we kept the public hearing on. So with that, I'll turn over to.
Mayor and Board, the public hearing pertains to a request before the Board of Alderman, or the public hearing pertains to amendments to Chapter four hundred on the zoning regulations. I'll break them up into two sections. First section will pertain to a request to Chapter four hundred, and that's pertaining to Chapter four hundred point two-three-oh on accessory uses pertaining to garages and accessory buildings. What this basically would do would be prohibit the use of a wheeled trailer, portable storage container, or roll-off trash container as an accessory building. It would also talk about that on exterior building materials and colors, using the wood should and not shall be similar to the main building and share the design of the principal building. So I provided some examples of pictures as far as where we're basically saying is that the trailers or the roll-off containers of the comics containers would not be permitted as accessory buildings in residential districts.
Do we want to talk about each of them separately?
Sure.
Probably. On that, okay, so clarify something for me. If someone had a Conex and they wanted to, basically, skin it where it looked like, you know, they put siding on or whatever, where it looked like their house, would that be allowed?
At that point, yes, it would be allowed, as long as it met the square footage requirement. It no longer would be a, a metal building if they skinned it and it was similar to the architectural design of roofing.
It's actually some kind of pitch refont probably or something. Another question I had, are we, I think there's confusion about the, are we grandfathered in current Conex buildings people have, or it'd be affected everybody?
No. So if you had an existing, and I, I hate to use the word Conex building. You had a similar container that was there before, as long as that building continues to stay there, that that would be considered a legal, non-conforming building, and therefore, it's allowed to stay there as long as you don't move it off-site and then move it back on-site. So it's considered grandfathered in, and therefore, would be a legal, non-conforming structure. It would be, then, anything going forward from the passage of the ordinance would be prohibited.
Any questions or discussion on the building aspect of it?
We're discussing this, it's not on the agenda?
The public hearing is.
Public hearing.
Yeah, so we, we had already, we had noticed the, we had noticed the public hearing, so we wanted to go ahead and give everybody a chance to discuss it, but no, the actual ordinance is not on the agenda. You don't have to have a, a public hearing on the same night as an actual ordinance.
Okay.
So, okay. Want to do this? So if there's anybody who wants to discuss the building part of, I'm breaking it up into two parts, because I think it's kind of two separate things. So if there's anyone who wishes to address the building portion of the, maybe proposed amendment, you could step forward and address the board on that if you would like. Okay, go on to the parking aspect of it then?
Sure. So the second part of it pertains to Section four hundred point two-nine-oh of Chapter four hundred zoning regulations, and that pertains to off-street parking and loading lanes. And that pertains to off-street parking and loading regulations. So, um, what we are requesting before the board and also has been gone through planning and zoning commission. Uh, parking of automobile, this is how it currently reads. And then I'll share with you what we are adding to it. I'll emphasize it. So that we're very clear of what it currently reads and then what we are adding to it. So currently what it reads is parking of automobiles, trucks, boats, trailers, recreational vehicles. We are removing lawn mowers and tractors. It currently reads, or any other motorized vehicles. We are adding the language excluding lawn equipment. It currently reads is not permitted on, on improved surfaces. It currently reads in front, we are adding the word rear. It currently reads and side areas of property in commercial, industrial, and residential areas under two acres per parcel throughout the city. There's an exception in the code that says properties with existing gravel driveways and or gravel parking areas in the side yard, provided they are properly maintained. That's in the co- code currently. That remains in the code.
So gravel is grandfathered in then?
That is correct.
But if someone is currently parking on their grass with no gravel, that would not be grandfathered in?
That is correct, in the rear yard.
Did, was fencing?
Currently not allowed in the front and side yard.
Was fencing discussed at all by planning and zoning?
So fencing was discussed by the planning and zoning commission. The planning and zoning commission removed the language of a six-foot privacy fence. And the, uh, allowing, in the rear yard, six-foot privacy fence on grass in the rear yard.
So when it was presented, the planning and zoning, it was presented that they could park on the grass if there was a six-foot privacy fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Do you want me to read exactly how it was presented?
Well, I mean, I, I get the gist of it unless there's more there. I just, because I know at one time I had heard there was a, that, that it was kind of an either or thing, that it could be improved surface or it could be a fence. And then it got, looked like it's just the concrete surface now.
So how it was presented to the planning and zoning commission was the rear of the property must be enclosed by a six-foot privacy fence to allow parking on unimproved surfaces in commercial, industrial. That was removed.
Anyone from the board? I spoke with several neighbors in my area. Some of them don't fall on this because they're over two acres, but there were a number who did. They were very concerned about it. Some of them were here tonight. Some of them I contacted back and told them it'd been removed from the, from the agenda. So they, they weren't going to attend tonight. Um, I didn't know if it was going to come back up again later. I've got an email from some of them here that they are in opposition to it. Majority of the feeling was is that government has a certain amount of control over what you do on your property. You go from the curb to your front door, there's a good neighbor policy where if somebody parks a vehicle in the front yard on concrete blocks, that deters from the entire neighborhood. And yes, that should not be allowed and they're good with that. But once you get past the front door, which would include the backyard, that's their property. And the government should have a very limited scope of what they can tell you to do on your property. So, uh, they were significant concern out there about this. I know a number of them probably called city hall here about it. And, uh, if, if it gets brought up again, they will come in and voice their concerns themselves. And all I presented to them that we, it was that we were, that the city was considering this. And I, and, and cut and paste the, the proposal as it sits there and gave to the people. So they would have the information to, to, to decide on their own how it can concern them one way or the other. So I, I think this is an overreach of, and it kind of falls back even to the Conex. If it's in your backyard, it, it really shouldn't be the city's business to tell you what you can't do. I understand aesthetics, you know. I know I have a neighbor in my neighborhood that has one that doesn't conform to the house look and whatever, but it's behind this privacy fence. So, and he'll be the grandfathered if he decides he wants to keep it after today or whenever this comes up again and if it passes. But I, I think that we were taking government reaching a little too far to consider something like this. And I have concerns about the fact that there are only four of the seven zoning members at that meeting. So you only have three out of seven, which is not even majority of that board that voted for this. Which gives it even less, in my opinion, support that it even should have come to us at this point with only three of, of seven approving it. So, uh, those are my concerns.
I, I too have had numerous inquiries about this. And of course, my district is, is old town. And there's a lot of people concerned that are parking their boats and stuff in the backyard right now that have chain link fences and they're sitting on grass. And they don't, they, well, most of them cannot afford to upgrade the privacy fencing or put down concrete pads or, or what have you. And there's, they're pretty boisterous about it. I, I would ask that we send it back to committee. And look, look it over with. I, I wasn't able to be at the meeting because I was out of town or out of state on vacation. But I think it needs to go back to committee. Um, I'm getting quite a bit of a backlash over it.
I understand what, you know, you guys are kind of saying, I'm an overreacher or this or that. But I think at the same time too, you gotta have some type of standards. Because if you just say, well, backyard, you do what you want, that opens up the door to, you know, a lot of different things. You know, all of a sudden you could have a parking lot and you could have five trailers back there parked in the backyard. I mean, and I don't know if you're saying that they changed the ordinance, that they gotta change their fences, it's going forward. If I'm mistaken on that or not, but, uh, um, you know, I just think there has to be some, you know, some type of, you know, ordinance or, you know, you just can't leave it open, you know, because then we'll have shipping containers in, in backyards and, you know, whatever else, you know, going on. Seeing a camper parked in a backyard off a stire bar and they got electric ran into it, you know, no fences. So it was, you know, we're gonna start putting Airbnbs in backyards, things like that with campers. I don't know, but I'm just, I think there needs to be some set of something, you know, as far as that goes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there you, Mark, but planning and zoning's voting is different than ours, right? Because theirs is majority of the board is present, right? Because ours is a little different. We have to have four votes, I think, right?
For an ordinance, yes.
For an ordinance. So is that typical for there to only be four members at a P and Z meeting? Is that pretty typical?
Yeah, you know, typically, you know, they'll have four or five. I mean, it, it would be excellent to have all seven members present. But we sometimes run into a situation where we may only have five.
So clarified, Mark, I'm kind of got confused and lost there. If, if you have a chain link fence now and you're currently parking your boat or camper on the grass, are they grandfathered that way or do they have to enclose it or put an approved drive-in?
So if it's, if this ordinance, if this moves forward and this was passed exactly as it's written now, they would not be allowed to park that boat on the grass regardless of a fence.
It would have to be concrete.
It would have to be an improved surface.
They're not gonna go for that.
Because they even remove, they even remove the fence thing too. So before, I think it was either or, now it's just the concrete. Yeah. What, the concrete asphalt, is that the two options or it can be asphalt? But it can't be gravel unless you got a variance or height.
Correct.
Yeah, most of my people's concern is they're parking back there now and have for the last thirty-five years or better behind a chain link fence. And nobody's ever said anything. Now you're gonna expect them to spend the money to, to do it. They're, they're a little up in arms about it.
Well, remember, their neighbors may have said something. But our response to their neighbors is there's nothing that the city can do because you're allowed to do that the way the ordinance is written.
Yeah, I, I can think.
I do want to point that out because we get a lot of calls about people parking their boats and their cars in the backyard on grass. Our code enforcement officer gets a lot of calls.
I, I can think.
In old town, everywhere. So I, I want to be very clear.
I, I can think.
We're not bringing this before you just because, you know, Mark dreamt this up. Get a lot of calls.
I, I can just think of one, one, two block street in my, in my district that there's a boat or a camper in each, every one of them's backyard. So that's, that's the numbers that we're looking at that we're affecting. And, and most of them are getting up to where they're fixed incomes and so there, there would be a revolt, let's put it that way.
Most, most of the concern about parking on grass is that they don't take care of the vegetation issue, which we have other codes and ordinances to deal with that when it gets above a certain height. So there is a means to, to deal with it. Somebody's not maintaining around their, their, whatever they have parked out there. We can do it under the weeds ordinance, which that is already set in place. So, um, I think we have other avenues to keep people's backyards looking.
Yeah, well, that's not, the weeds aren't generally a complaint with the parking back there. It's, and I guess part of this, it's not usually a one or a two, it's the yards that have three things parked back there that we get the calls and complaints from.
Just drive down E. Kirby and you can see the house there. It's, uh, I like it. I don't see anything wrong with wanting to pit a regulation, pit a limit to make our city look a little bit better. I don't think we should jump a gun based off of two block area. And I understand that they've been there for a long time. I understand that. But we have a population of fifteen thousand in Grand Valley. Let's not make a decision based on a small minority that's going to be upset. It's why we're elected official to do what residents of Grand Valley want, to make this city better. We're, you know, going with a different brand. We're branding our city different. You know, downtown Main Street. We're going in a positive direction. Stop living in the past. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Uh, since this is a public hearing, I'll open it up. We already had the one gentleman speak, so we'll make sure he is on our, for that. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the parking aspect of it? Okay, so we'll close that public hearing then. Next up are resolutions. We have resolution R twenty-two dash fifty-five. It's a resolution by the board of Alderman of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds for the benefit of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution R twenty-two dash five-five for.
Motion of Alderman Knox to approve resolution R twenty-two dash fifty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'll complete round. All right. Any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, uh, before us tonight is, uh, Mr. Jack Ryan Feldman from Baker Tilly, who has a presentation, um, on this.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Board of Alderman for having me here today. Before you is a resolution authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bond series twenty twenty-two A. This is to finance the, the project that was, uh, approved by voters in April for the police facilities. The last, the last couple issues that have been before you over the last four years have been primarily refundings for interest cost savings and, uh, releasing of disadvantageous covenants to the city. So I thought it'd be helpful to kind of start from the beginning on the finance team, the, the structure that we're taking and, and, and the approach that we're taking to this financing. As this is a new money issue and on your, on your, on your books for eleven years or so. So just thought it'd be, thought it'd be instructive to, to kind of walk through things from the beginning. So, um, as, as the city administrator mentioned, my name is Jack Ryan Feldman. I'm a director with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. Um, we are the city's independent municipal advisor. We are not affiliated with, with any banks or underwriters. And our advice that we provide to the city is held to a fiduciary standard, meaning that anything that we do is, is in the interest of the city above, above our own. Next over on the financing team is Gilmore and Bell. They've been a longstanding bond counsel for, for the city. Um, and they, they advise on, on the writing of the official statement, all the documents, the, the resolution that you have before you was prepared by them. Um, and they, they provide all the disclosure, um, information and, and advice on, on that and protecting the interests of the city. And then lastly, on the financing team is UMB and they're the registrar and paying agent. And basically what, what happens there is the city wires the debt service payments to UMB. And then through UMB, that starts to filter its way over to the, the actual bondholders and investors of, of these bonds. So the, the structuring and marketing and, and the way that we're, we're approaching this, this issue is, um, obviously the, the city is the issuer of these bonds. The purpose is, is the new money for the police facility, the improvements and the, the, um, equipment and fixtures. The, the sale date is going to be August eighth at ten thirty a.m. And I'll, I'll go about, I'll discuss the approach to that, um, soon. And then closing will, is scheduled to be for August thirty-first, which is, that's when you'll get cash in hand from, from whoever the purchaser of these bonds will be. Um, the estimated par amount is about thirteen point five million dollars. That's what we estimate is to be the necessary process, or the necessary par amount to generate the necessary proceeds for the fourteen million dollar project. But the, uh, from your, from your election, you have authorization to issue up to fourteen million dollars for this project. Um, and then as part of the structuring, the city is going to do, uh, available cash contribution for some of the costs of issuance. Um, the method of sale that, um, that we're recommending to the city is a public competitive sale. What, what happens in that approach is that we prepare all the necessary documents, the official statement, which is like the prospectus for in the bond world. Um, we prepare all of that ahead of time and we say that we will be taking bids at ten thirty a.m. on August eighth. And we send that to a wide, uh, array of banks and, and underwriters. And, and they will submit their bid and we will open them at that time. We, for, for projects such as this where, um, general obligation bonds, it's, it's, you know, pretty straightforward transaction. It's not, there's not a whole, there's not a big story to tell. It's a, it's a city issuing general obligation bonds to, to build a facility. This is something that, that banks and investment, uh, and investment firms see every day. And so, um, this is something that, uh, that we believe provides best pricing execution for the city. Um, and it, as it, uh, injects the most amount of competition for interest rate for your bonds. And so we will select the purchaser of the bond based on who provides the lowest overall interest rate to the city. And then, and then on the, at that, uh, the August eighth commission meeting or board of Alderman meeting, we will present to you the sale results, bid, what all the rates were. We'll be able to award the bonds to the, to the lowest bidder. Um, and, and then we'll, we'll move on from there. In terms of the structuring, we, we've had to structure around some of the outstanding bonds that you have remaining, which are the eighteens and the twenties that are, are outstanding for just another, uh, year and a half or so. So the first interest payment will be in March of twenty twenty-three, the first principal payment. Due to that wrapping around the outstanding debt service I mentioned will be in twenty-five. Um, the city will have the option to make a prepayment on March, uh, after March first, twenty thirty-one. And for the rating, we, we anticipate getting a rating from S and P. Uh, you are, your current issuer rating is double A minus with a stable outlook. We, we don't foresee a, a reason why that would change while we go through the rating process. The, these bonds will be deemed tax exempt. So you'll, you'll get that, um, you'll, you'll get that lower interest rate compared to if you were in the taxable market. Thanks to the, the tax exemption that bondholders will. So you'll, you'll get that, um, you'll, you'll get that lower interest rate compared to if you were in the taxable market, thanks to the, the tax exemption that bondholders will receive for the, the interest on your bonds. And then, and then lastly, the, the estimated, uh, true interest cost that we're anticipating for this is, is about three point seven five percent. Obviously, you know, we've, we've been seeing in, in the market, if you open up the Wall Street Journal every once in a while, if you, if you can stomach it, the interest rates have been rising for the last, um, since the beginning of the year. So we, we have been seeing that ratcheting up of, of interest rates, but um, certainly in, in the grand long arc of, you know, the, the municipal bond market, three seventy-five is a good, is a, is a good, uh, good rate. Um, so as I, as I mentioned, the action for you all today is, is the authorization that kind of kicks off this whole process. Um, I, I will warn you, this is, this is me, a, a finance guy reading, reading resolutions. So of course, if you have, uh, additional, uh, uh, questions about, about the resolution itself, certainly, uh, you know, I, I will pass that answer, you know, pass those questions off. But in, in broad strokes, what's happening is that you are authorizing the city staff and consultants to prepare the necessary documents and to do, and take actions that are necessary to facilitate the sale and, and closing of, of these bonds. And then also the, the city is, is committing to assisting the purchaser with, with some, uh, the, the applicable regulations as it relates to, uh, secondary, um, continuing disclosure. Um, and then, and then as I, as I mentioned, um, we'll be back here on, on August eighth where, where you'll be able to, uh, review the bids and, and award them to, uh, to the lowest bidder. Um, in terms of next steps, um, if approved, um, we'll prepare all the necessary documents. Um, we'll, S and P will hold a rating call with, um, the, with the city's management and, um, and myself. Um, sale date, as I mentioned, August eighth. Um, we'll open the bids at ten thirty, um, closing August thirty-first, and then we'll be, be back before you, um, at, at that night's meeting. I'm so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You want to have any questions? All right, thank you. No other questions or comments? All unfair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Second, I, I do have a question. And I'm behind the curve on this. We, we don't have designs yet for what the building actually is going to. We just have conceptual drawings.
We're not through the final design phase of it yet. We're through. And when we got to the election, we were through like fifty percent of schematic design, and that's what we've been getting into now is the actual design phase, final design phase of it.
I know there's a timeline when this stuff has to fall out. I just, I know early on the estimates was that the cost of this was going to be around twelve million dollars. And with inflation that's gone on with certain things that they idea was we'd add to this bond request to cover any increased cost because of inflation. But we don't know if that has impacted it to that level. And I'm a little hesitant that we go out and borrow almost fourteen million dollars and end up only needing the twelve.
Second, I could tell you our, our architect and all of the firms, besides even McAllen Gordon that we ended up going with, the other ones looking at it and going over the designs to where they're at now and then going off of where the, um, the market has been on similar projects. They all are saying it's going to be right at that or it might have to take some, like it's going to be more expensive than that, if that makes sense. Like it's, that number is not fluffed at this point. They think it's going to be right there.
And I just, we're several months away from having all that done and starting construction and stuff. We're going to end up having money sitting in the bank and incurring interest charges long before we need to actually spend the money out. I'm just wondering about the timeline.
Well, the, the plan is to hopefully actually start this winter on the, the building of it. Cause the, basically final design was, was about six months. So from, and so it started before or right after the election. So from April on, that would put us right there around the, like where they wanted to get bid packets out and like the end of September is where the, the schedule is now. And obviously if we don't have all of this in place ahead of time, we can't really, we don't have the money. And I, you know, to Jack's point about the interest side of it, I mean, ideally we would have already been down this path and had everything done, but because we wanted to be good stewards and not, you know, put the cart ahead of the horse, we didn't go all the way through on design. And so we're kind of playing catch up on that. And the outlook on interest rates is not that they're going down anytime soon. And obviously as those go up, that means there's less to actually spend on the project. Cause we, one of the things.
Same amount to spend on, it's just going to work on the other side with the interest.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Next up's ordinances.
Bill number B twenty-two dash twenty is an ordinance amending traffic code schedule to stop intersections of the City of Grand Valley Municipal Code.
Mayor, I move we approve bill twenty-two twenty for its first read and bring it back for its second read by title only.
I have a motion from Alderman Arnold to approve bill B twenty-two dash twenty for its first reading. Bring it back by title and for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Knox. Any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, um, basically what you have before you is kind of an update to our code that lists all of the stop signs that are in the city, which we have to have in there to be able to, uh, for our, uh, police force to be able to, um, issue citations if someone doesn't, doesn't follow them. So these are the subdivisions that have been recently completed. Um, so these are the things that go on through the process. They were all approved in those spots. This is just updating the code to reflect the, the stop signs that are there at this point.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
The next one is B twenty-two dash twenty-one. This is an ordinance changing the zoning on approximately seven point five-three acres from district, district R three P U D, multi-family residential district, planned unit development to district R three P, which is multi-family residential district, planned overlay district, and approval of the preliminary development plan plat for the lofts at Creekside Landing.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B twenty-two dash twenty-one and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion from Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Cleaver to approve bill, excuse me, B twenty-two dash twenty-one for its first reading, bring it back by title and for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Mills. Any discussion?
Mayor and members of the board, this is what we, you just had the public hearing on. Uh, you know, I think I'd want to reiterate is this piece of land, is already zoned R three. Um, so it, you know, this isn't taking it from a, like a single family to a multifamily. This is basically changing the multifamily plan that's, that's for that parcel. From, I think the original one was back in two thousand seven?
Six.
Prior to the downturn, but if you have any questions, obviously staff is here and, uh, the applicant as well.
I will throw this out there because I did hear that some comments about possibly sending it back to plan and zoning. If this board so chooses to do that, I would entertain a motion to, uh, table this bill with the caveat that it would go back to plan and zoning for further review. That that's something the board wants to do.
I, I, I think with the way Mark explained it, that it still has to go through all its processes. This is just allowing us to start the process. I'd, I would draw that request.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments then? Seeing none, all unfair, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, next up is city attorney's reports.
To report, I see some familiar faces. My name's Anthony Hernandez. I'm local municipal, so it's good to see you all.
All right, next up, city administrator and staff reports.
Yep, in the packet there were written reports from community development and, uh, H R. And then we just want to have a reminder. I think Jamie has reached out to a lot of you. Been on the twenty-fifth, um, is when we have the person in here to do the, um, the headshots, the new photos. So just, if you were signed up for a time, please remember that. And we could probably send out a, a reminder, um, email, but that would be, um, July twenty-fifth on that. That was all the, uh, the staff comments.
Okay. Uh, Board of Alderman, report some comments. Alderman Arnold.
I had it brought to me from the known people I spoke to about these other issues that we had on the board tonight. I know by statute, we have to place these informations in a newspaper and, and public notice and so forth. Number of them expressed a concern that why couldn't we get these information on these placed out on our Facebook? And do the blast on it so that, you know, people in favor and people opposed would all have an equal opportunity to know whether or not what's coming down and if it affects them and if they need to make their voice heard one way or the other about, about the, uh, situation. I think it'd just be a, a better transparency of what's going on if we, if we could keep the public better informed because we're so limited with ability with lack of newspapers and so forth. People don't take papers anymore. So I think it'd be a good move to keep people informed.
I also would like to add that, um, I also placed the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission on the city's website. And I quickly, as fast as I can do the minutes from the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, even though they're unofficial minutes, I put them on the, uh, city website as well. So the public has the opportunity to see the discussion that occurs from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on those topics as well, even though the, uh, they're unofficial many minutes, they have that discussion that occurs. So. But I will definitely, uh, do the, uh, Facebook and city website as well.
And that's great that you do that, but then that involves making one out and looking. And where, uh, I found out about this, newspaper. And I want to thank those that took the time to write the article, that discussed these issues in, in that meeting and, and put it out there. Where I didn't have to go look for it. It popped up. I saw it. I started reading what was there and the different things were going on in the community. It was very informative and I, I give them kudos for doing a good job of getting the public, uh, informed. I, I think if we can just follow up with that, it just makes things a lot better.
You bet. The more that we can share information, the more I'm willing to do.
Mills? Alderman Knox?
I've had a request from a couple of people, a couple of different residents, I should say, on Broadway. This is kind of for Captain Palace check, but that we increase the enforcement in, in that area from, from, uh, Main Street west over like Gardner because the speed limit is fifteen and they're running thirty-five and forty down through there. So, uh, they, they want it slowed down. So.
I see him fighting it down, so he'll get on it.
Just a little more presence to.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Alderman Cleaver?
Nothing at this time.
All right, next up is mayor's report. I just have one thing, uh, back in April, resolution R twenty-two dash thirty-four was passed, which, uh, established where, uh, food truck Friday night events would be held. Uh, for those of you who have been able to come out to one of the ones that we've done on the first Fridays downtown, uh, they've been extremely successful down there. And I think, you know, the churches have been helping out, which is great. And, uh, I think the businesses downtown are, are benefiting from it. So we are looking at possibly just doing first and third Fridays next year and that's it. Not doing any behind the community center, just doing two a month downtown and that, and that be it. So we would like to try that, uh, this coming Friday, since it is the third Friday of July. But, uh, I would need a motion to add, uh, July fifteenth to the, uh, days that trucks are allowed to set up in street parking since it is a city right of way, uh, downtown. And that would be the only change we would make this year. The next year would come for full approval again, whatever dates.
I make motion.
I have a motion from Alderman, Alderman Mills. I have a second.
Second.
Alderman Knox. Any discussion?
I drove through there last Friday and when they had cones up all the way along Main Street and down Front Street at eight o'clock in the morning, taking away parking from the downtown businesses long before Friday night food truck would come in. I understand there's a, a line where you need to get those spots made available, but it just seemed a little of a bit of an infringement on the parking. There's so little of it there available for the, so Main Street to take away that, that many so early in the day. You know, so that, you know, lunch traffic couldn't get into the two places that had served lunch, uh, three places that served lunch.
And I can tell you, we talked to all the businesses about that and they were all okay with that when we did that. So, I mean, we can do it later in the day. Just, I mean, that's not a problem.
So, you know, even a customer service, I mean, even though they don't want to say anything about it, it's you could, you, you force them to have to park all the way down at one lot or at the other, at the end, end of the street as the two, two or three or four spots that are available. They're closed in for some of the, and typically during the week, cause most people at work, it's going to be your senior citizens that are out having lunch and so forth. So they've got to navigate the Main Street and try to.
And we can definitely leave the ones on Main Street open. I mean, I know the, the one church that actually requested us block those off because that's where they're putting their tables at. And they didn't want people parking out there during the day. So that was actually a request from them to do that. But yeah, we can definitely leave the ones on Main Street open till later in the day.
What, what time would you suggest? Noon?
After lunch. Yeah, we can do it after lunch or rush go down and do it.
Make sure everybody's out of there and the time gets set up.
Yeah, we can do that definitely. Any other discussions or questions? All right, seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, that is all I have. I believe we do have a need for an executive session for.
One legal and three personnel.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session.
All moved.
Motion from Alderman Knox, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Mills. Any discussion? All right, it'll be a roll call.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Arnold?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn the executive session.